To order at six o'clock PM. On item two, roll call. All aldermen are present. Item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on July 16th, 2024. See attachment one. What are your wishes, council? I get a motion by Veneman, seconded by Pluus. Any questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Item five, consider for adoption the actions of the planning commission at its meeting held on August 5th, 2024. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission met at 4:00 PM on August 5th in the council chambers at City Hall. A quorum of members was present. A list of other members in attendance is available at the city clerk's office or the community development department. The meeting was called to order at 4:05 PM. Item one was the approval of the report from July 1st. Motion by Daven to approve the report from July 1st, seconded by Maruut's. That motion carried four zero. Item number two was a request from the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce and a public hearing on that request for a zoning map amendment to rezone 1120 Lincoln Street, parcel ID 3408357, from R2 Mixed Residential District to B2 General Commercial District. Mr. Kearns provided a summary of the request. Commissioner Palmquist questioned the comprehensive plan, future land use map designations, to which staff clarified. Public hearing opened at 4:11 PM. Speaking against Michael and Cindy Morton of 1011 Lincoln Street, they questioned the notification map, to which staff clarified the map only intended to notify or to identify those who were notified. Speaking in favor, Stacy Kiwi, President of the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. Public hearing closed at 4:13 PM. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the rezoning request, seconded by Daven. That motion carried four zero. I do have to correct a spelling on that, on that motion. Item three was adjournment, motion by Daven to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Maruut's. That motion carried five zero. Meeting adjourned at 4:14 PM. With that, I submit it for your approval.
Council, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Item six, consider for adoption the actions of the standing committees of the common council as follows. A finance and property committee meeting held on August 6th, 2024.
The finance and property committee met at 5:54 PM on Tuesday, August 6th, in the council chambers in City Hall. All members of the finance and property committee were present, except Alderperson Delaney, who was excused. Alderperson Palmquist attended in his place of Alderperson Delaney. Item one, call to order. Chairperson Catna called the meeting to order at 5:54 PM at the conclusion of the Human Resources Committee. Item two, consider for approval a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages and temporary retail Class B wine license for St. Lawrence Catholic Church, 510 10th Avenue North, for a parish picnic event to be held on Sunday, August 11th, 2024, from 11:30 AM to 4:00 PM. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Palmquist to approve the license. Motion passed, three zero. Item three, consider for approval a taxi cab license renewal application from Randy Weiss for Gotta Go Taxi LLC. It was moved by Palmquist, seconded by Veneman, to approve a taxi cab license renewal application for Randy Weiss for Gotta Go Taxi LLC. Motion carried three zero. Item four, discussion regarding the tax assessments, the tax levy, and the city budget. City assessor Steve Shepro and the finance director, Tim DeSorci, provided information regarding tax assessments, the tax levy, and the city budget. No action was taken on this item. Item five, review and consider an application for a rail crossing elimination grant. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Palmquist, to approve an application for a rail crossing elimination grant in the amount of $33,000. Motion carried two one, with Catna voting in the negative. Item six, discuss and consider the disallowance of a claim from Jane Pajaki regarding the alleged trespass and other alleged violations of rights. See attached recommendation for disallowance and a copy of the claim. It was moved by Catna, seconded by Palmquist, to approve the disallowance of a claim from Jane Pajaki regarding alleged trespass and other alleged violations of rights. Motion carried three zero. Item seven, audit of the bills. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Catna, to approve check numbers 22360 to 22764. Motion carried three zero. Item eight, set next meeting date. The next regular meeting of the finance and property committee is scheduled for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the first floor conference room. Item nine, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Catna, seconded by Veneman, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee will consider proposals for website redesign and hosting and website maintenance services. In closed session, the committee considered proposals for website redesign and hosting and website maintenance services. Item 10, the committee will return to open session. It was moved by Catna, seconded by Veneman, to return to open session. Motion carried three zero, and the committee returned to open session. Item 11, discuss and consider approving a resolution approving website redesign and hosting and web maintenance services and a possible C Click Fix application with the initial cost funded by franchise and video service provider fees. It was moved by Catna, seconded by Veneman, to refer the consideration of the above proposal to the common council for consideration. Motion carried three zero. Item 12, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Palmquist, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee discussed an update on the sale and development of the property in the downtown triangle area, and will discuss negotiation and strategy regarding selling of the property and terms of a development agreement for downtown development. In closed session, the committee discussed an update on the sale and development of the property in the downtown triangle area, and discussed negotiation and strategy regarding the selling of the property and the terms of a development agreement for downtown development. No action was taken. Item 13, the committee will adjourn in closed session. In closed session, it was moved by Veneman, seconded by Palmquist, to adjourn. Motion carried three zero, and the meeting adjourned at 7:41 PM. And with that, I make a motion to submit these for council approval.
I got a motion by Catna, seconded by Palmquist. Oh, my fault, sorry.
I'd like to hold out item five. Five, please.
I have a motion by Catna. I got a second by Austin. Questions, comments, Mr. Delaney?
On the C Click Fix thing, that was referred to the whole council. I don't know how we approve it when it was referred to us to make a decision, yes or no on that. I don't know if we should, if we can hold that out separate, or if we, I don't know what the plans are, so.
Right, it can, it's actually, if you want to hold it out, and then there's a closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss that item, and then to take action on it if necessary.
Okay, I'd like to hold that item out until item nine of our agenda tonight.
Oh, so don't do that first. Is there any objection to, because I have a motion and a second, I reacted too quickly there, we have to have a unanimous consent to hold out that until the end of the meeting? Everybody says yes?
Yeah.
Anyone else, Mr. Delaney?
Also, I would like to add that our tax assessor, Steve Shepro that we have, I know that he has a very thankless job here in the city, but being a council member, I would like to send him the appreciation of us for the work that he does. He does such an excellent job, and he makes the job that he does very easy to understand for the regular person, so I just wanted to say that, thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, for the remainder of the, go ahead and cast your ballot, your vote, your votes. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Item five, Matty?
I asked to hold out this item because after initially approving and having support for it, I have some concerns about moving forward with it and how it will impact our local businesses in that area. So on the map, there's 13 businesses there that would be impacted by an overpass, and some of those would now be front-facing to a retaining wall. We would then have to close that street and reroute traffic for a minimum of two to three years while we're constructing that overpass. And then in the end, we have ruined any chance of us being able to move those tracks. So with the noise and other safety issues that come along with potentially moving the tracks versus creating an overpass, I know that there's other ways that we can go about remedying those. However, we've been talking about those issues and concerns since 2009, so I have a little bit of doubt on our ability to follow through on those grants as well. So overall, I would feel more comfortable not spending the $33,000 to write this grant or spending $33,000 with a contractor who is willing to write it in a way that benefits all of the businesses in the area, the residents in the area, and makes the most sense of what we're proposing to do. I'm not ready to make a motion because I don't know if anybody else has other thoughts to add to that.
If I could take a minute just to update too, I appreciate it, I haven't had a chance. I know we've talked a few times on this, try to get hold of everybody and update yours to progress. Joe and I did meet today with Tim Radke, who was the state, I want to say engineer, planner during the 2001 reconstruction of Grand Avenue. And at that time, they put together all the possible alternatives, pretty much what we're talking about right now, the overpass being one, the shorter version of relocate, track relocation, and then the longer version through the county lands, and kind of gave us the rundown as to where everything they had accomplished during that time, and got it all the way to the council floor with everybody's approval, except for, at that time, my understanding is the council itself voted no to it, which then put us on the path to putting the track where it is now and redoing Grand Avenue with the way it was designed now, in its current state. Wealth of information, and I guess the, what we took away from that was if we, with the same understanding, if we do build the overpass now, we'll never change, we'll never get the tracks out. But he also shared with us that there's been overpasses built that have then been removed years later because they were just so bad for the neighborhood and, and just wasn't, it wasn't a good call. So at that time, after a long conversation, we decided to touch base with Scott from Aries again, and, and Joe did make that contact. Joe, do you want to share what he had said?
Sure. So reaching back out to Scott Wilson, let me just pull up the notes that I have here. So we wanted to reach out and ask him if the rail crossing elimination grant, you know, as far as any planning efforts to something other than a grade separation project, so perhaps towards a track relocation project, if that was a potential option. His thoughts are, on a planning grant, the likelihood of that being awarded was, you know, much easier than a planning, design, and construction type of grant. He anticipated that that sort of effort, in comparison to a $40 million overall type of project, the planning efforts would be around the $400,000 to $500,000 range, and that he would, they would still have enough time to, you know, compile some sort of planning effort. One caveat to that is the rail crossing elimination grant is, is a new program. It came 2023, I think, is when it was initiated. It was all part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed. So the, you know, the future of it is, you know, potentially unknown. The grade separation, the planning grant wouldn't really do much, you know, planning efforts toward the grade separation wouldn't do, wouldn't be that fruitful, simply because of the fact that there, there isn't much that we would obtain from, from planning efforts. But other than that, that was largely the extent of the conversation, other than if the city wanted to pursue something other than a grade separation, so a track relocation either in a planning, planning efforts, or, you know, a full project, that his, his counterpart at Ares would be, likely be interested in helping pursue that. Something that would go past or into 2025 would be something that would likely be handed off as he'd be retiring, but nevertheless, Ares would be interested in continuing to work with the city on those efforts.
Thank you. Just from the way my mind works, give you a second. So the, kind of the, the path we'd have to follow is, it's hard for us to go to, to the people we need to go to, surrounding communities, the county, CN, and General Chemical, and the other folks that own the other buildings in town, that, you know, there's just a lot of moving pieces. But at the same time, Tim said it would be hard for us to get anybody to get on board if we don't have funding set up, some sort of funding, which is what we're talking about, going to asking Aries if they would still be interested in, in writing a grant for the planning stages of great, track relocation. So I'm kind of asking you guys at this time, excuse me, if track relocation is what we kind of all want as the future of the West Side, then we would change trajectory and we would move towards track relocation, writing a grant for it, putting that in place so that we can go out and start talking to the, probably put it, at that point, put a committee together of people who have been involved in this in the past, and those that, you know, key people for it, and start talking to the folks we need to, and build our case for track relocation in the nearest possible future time. It's going to take longer than one month, though, is kind of what it's coming down to. Justin?
So I understand that the, the over, the grant for the overpass is a new grant, and I'm all about pursuing those grant dollars to ease the burden and the cost for the Wisconsin Rapids taxpayer, however. Okay. However, I do feel that the overpass only solves a small portion of the problems presented by those tracks, in that, you know, the Grand Avenue is probably the most heavily traveled road that's often blocked by the tracks, but we also have Seven, Chase Avenue that's often blocked, 17th Avenue, and frequently Gainer Avenue with students being late often to Rams Middle School because of the tracks. Not to mention some of the tragic pedestrian versus train accidents that have happened in the city have happened at locations other than Grand Avenue. So I do think the long-term solution, and the better solution, is the track relocation, even though that does come with a lot more work and much more, a lot more partnerships with other business owners and communities and landowners, but I think it's the, it's the better solution, and I'd like to see, you know, the money that we were going to invest in the grant writing be invested in pursuing, you know, other grant options for relocation, or investing that money into, you know, consulting, or somebody to help us with that relocation process.
Thank you. So what I'm gathering is, since the meeting, looks like things are starting to shift and plans have changed. So would we go forward with this grant, and, and then it would apply to what is being talked about now in track relocation, or is this grant specifically focused on overpass? Because if it's for track relocation and, and we're working on, or if it's just for the overpass and we're working on track relocation, I don't see the point in spending the $33,000.
So the, the, at committee, the proposal that was presented was just for the grade separation. I guess that's, that's the question. If, if the grant's written, it has to be written specific to the project, and, you know, so if, if the council wants to shift to a track relocation, you know, then those efforts would, you know, for any sort of grant application would shift towards that project. I think given the time constraint with the September 23rd deadline, kind of the, at least utilizing Ares, perhaps maybe there's somebody else that could do it in a shorter timeframe, but Ares does have experience with this particular grant application, and the best that they would, they'd still be able to do a planning type of grant application for the track relocation. However, doing a full planning, design, and construction application with all of the letters of support within a month's timeframe and the cost estimates, it would be too much to fit in within that timeframe.
So what's your consensus on the grant application for what was previously discussed versus where we're at now? Is it worth it still, or?
It's, I guess it's entirely, so, so the planning efforts that would come from a track relocation type of application, we'd certainly get some benefit from that over trying to do planning efforts for the grade separation, mainly because the, the track relocation, there's, geographically speaking, it's stretched out, and there's a lot of properties involved, more options as far as, you know, shifting it one way or changing the trajectory a little bit to get around environmentally sensitive areas, things like that. So some of the planning efforts, I would think there'd still be some value that we would, we would see by doing that sort of effort if we were to get an award. There again, that planning effort is somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000. So that's kind of a, you know, that's the type of grant award that we'd be looking at, an 80, 80, 20 cost share on a $400,000 to $500,000 project. Or we could wait till another round of applications in 2025 and use the next 13 months and make preparations for getting the letters of support and everything lined up to make a full grant application at that time.
Thank you. Being that after the $33,000, there, there still would need to be a match, and I spoke about this at committee too. I don't believe it's in our best interest to move forward at this time, but going into 2025, and as this kind of progresses along, and, and planning to apply for the grant again, with more information at that time, and leaning more towards the rail relocation for the reasons that have been spoken to tonight, I'm still where I was at previously in, in that, I just need to see more on this, and before we dedicate $33,000 to maybe get a grant, and then after that, we have to commit to matching it as well.
I think the tricky part that we face right now is not, like Tim, Tim said, we've, if we don't have the money secured, it's going to be tough to get the letters of support from everybody that's, would be involved in the project, so it's kind of which comes first, chicken or the egg kind of thing. And I think we'd have to go back to Aries and talk about what that planning award would look like and what it would take to write that grant. We don't have that specific money right now. I think right now, if we can just get a consensus of some sort, or it doesn't have to be, you know, if, if we want to move forward with track relocation, I would spend the day, you know, part of the days we have finding out more information and passing that on to you guys as we, as we get it, as long as we know that grade separation is kind of off the, off the docket, and track relocation is what we want to shoot for, and put the pieces together, one piece at a time to, to make that happen. If that's the direction we want to go, I just kind of need to know that, and that's what the energy will be focused on. And then at that point in time, I guess, if that is the case, and you guys want to vote this down and take the 33 off the, off the agenda, we can do that too. Do you see any reason not to do that at this point?
So voting, voting the $33,000 down for the grant altogether?
If we're not doing it for, yeah, grade separation, if that, again, I kind of need to know from the council what their wishes are, but is there any reason to move forward with the money at this point, if?
Yeah, so specific to the grade separation, then I'd, I'd say no, there wouldn't be. The only, the only value, I guess, with a planning grant with a track relocation is that that helps move, move the project forward in a big way, helps keep things moving if there, you know, hopefully there's another round of applications that could be done in 2025, that, you know, having, if we're successful with an award for a planning grant, that there would seemingly be some extra emphasis put on that, hey, this is a viable project, it's continuing to move forward, obviously with a second application. I guess those, those are my thoughts on that.
So a way of looking at that is, then, if we do want the planning to go forward, we need to know what that, what it would cost to get that part of the grant written?
Yeah, I would suspect it'd be very, very similar to what was proposed, you know, with the grade separation.
For the full project? For, wasn't that for all three phases?
If we're writing the grant, so, you know, if it's, if it's the planning grant or for track relocation, or the, you know, design and construction for the grade separation, I would suspect it's a similar amount of effort. I mean, I didn't check with Scott today, although I probably should have in hindsight, but I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be very similar.
Okay. Matty?
I have additional comments about grants. So breaking this down into a project, which it is, we, this application specifically has project planning, development, final design, and construction. When we apply for the entirety of a project, the price tag that comes back, even if it's split 80/20, is really big. If we If we break it down into those manageable pieces where we need funding for project planning, which includes getting those letters of support, that outcome is ours to use to apply for the next phase of the project, whether we apply for development and construction or just development the next phase, which could be next year. The types of grants that are available for different community development projects are immense. And we're not restricted to just waiting on this one. I was grant funded for 12 years, so they are out there and available. We just need to have the funds to commit and apply to do, to do those grants and submit the grants. I did look at the NOFO and it is intense. I think that a turnaround time of three weeks, given that we want to probably look at that application before it's submitted, is, it's intense. I'm surprised that Ares is still discussing considering applying for us because I would not touch that for 33. So I think $33,000, even to just do a planning component, would be worth every dollar we spent.
Any other comments, input? Patrick?
So are we looking to have that money set aside to continue looking at writing a grant? Or I'm a little confused as to the direction that, that we're going. Like, do we want a resolution to continue with track relocation and not the overpass? Or I'm, I'm just confused, I'm sorry.
That's right. I think, I guess that's what, right now it seems that grant, grade separation is not on the table. And again, this is, if you guys want that, that's fine. I guess the way I've seen it and the people we've talked to, it's not gonna be good for that corner, that area in terms of the long-term benefit, economic and everything else. So then it goes to track relocation, which not only helps, like Justin said, it helps seven within our community. And if we reach out to Port Edwards and maybe do this together, it could certainly help their community, too, because they also have another five to seven crossings that could be taken out. So the, the, the project is big and it sounds like what I'm hearing is we're gonna need somewhere around $33,000 to get the grant written for planning if we move towards working with everybody we need to in order to make relocation happen. It's just, and then that grant would be written within a month, right? And we would move forward based on that. If that's the planning, then that's what we're gonna use to go to everybody and get their input or, you know, letters of support for this project. That's the next step.
Yeah, so that, I understood the first part. The second part was just the money. Like, are we setting aside the $33,000 or $30,000 or whatever it is for the track relocation? That was where I was confused, was in that part of it.
Understood. All right. So right now, we don't have the exact amount of what that grant would cost. We're assuming it'll be somewhere in that ballpark, but we can figure that out. So if we don't have the exact number, I don't know. Is there a way to make this motion without that and bring that number back to the council alderman? Or do we need the exact amount? All right, we can do. Joe, do you have a, not to put you on the Nazi, but do you have a recommendation here that would work for our needs at this time to move forward with planning?
I guess if the, so the item was just an application for a rail crossing elimination grant, if it wasn't specific, a specific motion to the grade separation, then, you know, the three, $33,000 that was approved or through committee, you know, if that's still accepted at council, we can move forward with that. And then, you know, if there is something different, we can address it after the fact.
So then we would need a motion to, to change the, I would think we need a motion to, to change it from grade separation to relocation up to $33,000. And if we get it for less, then we will make sure that we get it for less than that. All right. So I have a motion by Palmquist. Justin?
Two.
I was.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, my phone.
Motion to approve rail elimination planning grant application with Ares for up to $33,000.
All right. And then I have a second by Pluus, and I believe, you wanna speak?
Yep, I was just going to just point out for clarification purposes that it's, it's not specific to the grade separation, the, the way the motion was originally mentioned. It's the real, the elimination of rail crossing. So I believe we're in line to vote. If, if our ultimate goal is to, for the relocation, this should still make that happen.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes, seven a's to one nay. Thank you. We are holding nine, 10, 11 out till the end of the meeting when we go into closed session. Item B, Public Works Committee meeting held on August 8th, 2024. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Zacker. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, August 8th, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members were present. We called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. The first item of business was reviewing the engineering and street department monthly activity report, which was reviewed. Item three, review and consider sign language and sign placement locations for the 48-hour parking ordinance. Proposed 48-hour parking sign locations and content wording were discussed. Motion by Penskover, second by Palmquist to post signs at all roads entering city corporate limits, estimated at 36 locations, with wording on sign as proposed in the referral, with the one exception of taking out the QR code to keep the cost of each sign down and to make more room for wording on the sign. Sign sizes to be based on vehicle speed and roadway classifications. That motion carried three zero. Item four, review the referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Item five regarding updating of parking ordinance was removed from the list. Alderperson Penskover requested to have his name added to item number seven, regarding paving on Third and Fourth Streets between Spring Street and Poplar Street. Item five, we set the next meeting date to September 5th at 5:00 PM and we adjourned at 5:26 PM. And that concludes the report of the Public Works Committee.
Council, what are your wishes? I have a motion by Palmquist, second by Delaney. Any other questions or comments? The motion is to?
I would like to, motion to approve holding out item three.
Holding out item three? Sorry about that. So. And Palmquist was the motion, Delaney was the second. Can I get unanimous consent to hold out item three, please?
Yep.
Anyone else? Everybody good? All right, item three is held out. And then go ahead and cast your ballots on the remain, hold on one second. All right, on the remainder of the minutes, go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Item three, Maddie?
This is the last piece that we need in place before we implement a 48-hour parking restriction, replacing our previous alternative side parking. And I wanted to hold this item out because I have some additional concerns that happened within my district recently that led me to understanding that this, while we intended it to be a 48-hour parking restriction, is likely going to be more like a 72 to 96-hour parking restriction. Because by the time the resident informs dispatch or the ordinance officer, there's, there are obviously multiple things happening. So it would be unrealistic to think that somebody is going to rush over and mark that car and it would be taken care of the next few days. So that gives us at best two more days after it's been there for 48 hours. Then considering the initial problem that we sought out to solve was the confusion in the way that we describe how to park on alternative sides. And I honestly don't think that it was ever the rule that was confusing, but more so how we explained it in various places on the webpage. A lot referred to overnight parking, which we never had a restriction for. It was a 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM restriction. And when people would come in to ask about it, there were various printed items within this building that had different descriptions in it. So I'm speaking my piece before we throw out the approval for the signs that a 48-hour parking restriction, in addition to the concerns with plowing and street sweeping, is likely going to be very difficult to enforce and monitor without some sort of additional staffing.
Jake?
Yeah, the ordinance is already went through and passed. This item is on sign language and sign placement locations. I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Catna, second by Delaney. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Motion passes, four a's to three nays. Sorry, five a's to three nays. All right. I'm C, Human Resources Committee meeting held on August 6th, 2024. Patrick?
Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee held a meeting on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. Alderpersons Pollock, Pluus, and Palmquist were present. Also present were Mayor Zacker, Alderpersons Veneman, Penskover, and Catna, City Attorney Sue Schill, Human Resources Manager Ryan Hartman, and Finance Director Tim DeSorcy. Item one was call to order. Vice Chairperson Pollock called the meeting to order at 4:01 PM. Alderpersons Pollock and Pluus were present. Alderperson Delaney was excused, but had requested that Alderperson Palmquist sit in for him. Vice Chairperson Pollock consented, and so Alderperson Palmquist was present and seated in place of Alderperson Delaney. Item two, a request from Alderperson Palmquist for continued discussion and a root cause analysis regarding fire department staffing levels and possible solutions. Discussion took place, no action taken. Attached is a PowerPoint that was provided by the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department. Item three, consider for approval, a request to temporarily contract for assistance with City Prosecutor Services. Motion by Palmquist, second by Pluus, to approve a request to temporarily contract for assistance with City Prosecutor Services, not to exceed the total budget allocation for 2024. Motion carried three to zero. Item four was adjourned. Motion by Pluus, second by Palmquist to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. Meeting adjourned at 5:47 PM.
Motion to approve. I had a motion. Yep, Justin Pluus, or Justin? Yep.
I'd like to hold out item number two. Number two.
Number two's held out. I got a motion by Catna, second by Palmquist. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote for the remainder of the minutes. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Item two, Justin?
At the last Human Resource Committee, it became evident that more questions were raised than solutions. And while the discussion was productive, we were still lacking a definite, a definite plan to address the fire department staffing. And addressing the staffing levels of our fire department is of critical importance to the safety and well-being of our community. Adequate staffing ensures that our firefighters and the public can perform their duty, our firefighters can perform their duties safely and effectively, minimizing the risks to both themselves and the public. So it is essential that we approach this with, issue with careful consideration that it deserves and ensure that any decisions made are based on full understanding of the situation and supported by good data. So therefore, I urge this council to refer this matter back to the Human Resource Committee so we can continue to explore possible solutions.
I got a motion by Justin. Second by Austin. Maddie?
I agree with Justin wholeheartedly. And wanted to add that we can't keep throwing money at a problem and doing the same thing over and over again and expect that problem to solve itself. I see this without exploring all of the possible ways that we could reduce strain on staff and the different structures of the fire department being discussed during Human Resources meetings that will eventually come back with another request because we have the same path. We'll come back with another request and have to add more and more. And I don't think it will ever end with our increasing call volume.
Jake?
I believe there's already a meeting being planned on this topic. Not exactly, okay.
Some of it will be.
Okay.
Patrick?
I think instead, instead of sending it back, I agree 100% with that it does need discussion. But I think instead of sending it back to a committee of three, it really should come to the whole council and we all should hash this out, figure out the solution, and move on. I don't think sending it back to a committee of three is the appropriate route to go on this.
It's, there's a discussion on it, maybe the whole, I'm still waiting for the agenda on it. It's, I'm waiting for the Sues to title the meeting. But there's no, there's no action item on it today. So I don't know what we're sending back, what are we sending back to the HR?
So we are in the process of setting up a committee of the whole meeting. And if you would like to refer this to that committee of the whole, now would be a good time. But, but now we have a motion for the HR. which would happen after the committee of the whole. And I guess at this point, we can take the HR off and make a new motion if we all agree to it. Or you can amend the motion?
So I still think, I still think the, it, whether there's a committee of the whole or not, I think still moving it forward to the HR committee might address some issues that may still come up and maybe streamline things a little more for the committee of the whole. If, if the committee of the whole happens before that or if it happens after that, prepares us for the committee of the whole. So I'm still not opposed to, regardless of the committee of the whole, still seeing this go back to HR.
Alright, so right now the motion is to send this back to the HR committee. And I have a motion by Pluus and a second by Austin. Any other questions or concerns for this motion? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes, five As to three Nays. Alright. Okay, so they're done. Alright, item seven, reports of other committees, commissions, boards and department reports are going to be filed. You can read them at your convenience. Item eight, referrals to committees. Jennifer?
I do have one referral from Alderperson Delaney regarding an amendment to the zoning code.
Alright, so that will be added to the referrals. Item nine, in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under section 19.851E of Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the council will consider proposals for website redesign and hosting and website maintenance services. Council, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Veneman, second by Pluus, to go into closed session. Questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes, five As to zero Nays. What did I say? Costs funded by franchise and video service provider fees. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve the website redesign and development to, funds to be taken from the franchise fees for the total of $27,403.60. Not to exceed, right? Yeah, that's what it to, the resolution was to pull them up. That's what the resolution is for, that it has to be taken from the franchise fees, correct?
I can send it out to you right now and you can see it full, with the numbers in it, if you want. Yeah, that's not great.
I would put in Civic Plus in the name. Good with that? Yep.
I sent it to Alderpersons and now I forgot to send it to you too, to the mayor and Mayor Zacker. Jennifer. And then we could attach the quote then to it.
Alright. Yep, alright, so we have a motion by Veneman, second by Pluus. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, seven As to one Nay. Item 12, adjourned, what are your wishes? Nobody wants to go home. I get a motion by Pluus.
Motion adjourned.
Seconded by Pence Gover. Go ahead and cast your ballots. Motion pa, not yet. Dennis, you got a vote? Motion passes eight to zero, thank you everybody.